Okay, good evening and welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education meeting work session for October 18, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first is first, approval of the agenda for tonight, I have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for October 4th, 2023, closed session. Got a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes from the closed session of October 4th as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And approval of the minutes for October 4th, 2023, open session.
I move to approve the minutes from the open session of October 4th as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item tonight is synergistic energy savings update, Mr. Muir and Mr. Amadeo.
So, President Schifinelli, Dr. Sal, board members, you had asked for us to bring in synergistics to give you an update of the progress that we were making. You approved this contract back in December of 2022, and we were able to move forward with this. Seated right in front of me is Mark Amadeo. He is our Energy Management Specialist, who is throughout the buildings at nighttime, weekends, during the daytime. You know, every now and then you see a little flashlight on top of the roof running around, that's him. We, just a little quick history, this is our second time around. It was formerly known as Energy Ed. A lot of school systems in the state of Maryland went through it, and I was actually the Energy Manager many, many years ago in Queen Anne's County, and we had success with that. The same company, just a different name, and one of the things that we realized through the years is that we, you know, I've taken on different jobs and no longer can oversee all of that. It's good to have Mark along to analyze the bills, along with the staff that comes along with that. We have individuals that are experts in boilers, HVAC, chillers, that help bring that to our staff. So, without stealing their show, I just want to give a little brief introduction. Thanks Scott and Mark.
Thank you for that. Yeah, so, probably one of the most important part of the program is having the full-time energy specialists inside the district, acting on your behalf and doing all the building audits that is needed to find, and all the attention that it needs to find all the opportunities out there to save energy. Like, our purpose here is to reduce your energy use so that you can use the savings for what matters most inside this district. So, I'll just, we're in the early stages of implementation. We started in January, and we have, you know, we've been collecting all the utility data, we've been putting it through our software, doing our analysis, trying to find opportunities inside that data, and then using our team, some behind me, to, you know, implement opportunities and implement processes for change. So, I'll start with the utility rate trend. So, as we all know, our utility rates, they very rarely go down, although Sid's done a great job here on propane, it looks like we have a reduction there. So, you're done well with your propane and your heating oil rates, but these numbers include all the fees, rentals, you know, everything that's associated with the use of the energy. So, you can see here, electricity is probably one of what we are concerned with the most. As you'll see in the next slide, it's the biggest, you know, cost for this district is in the electric. So, any percentage increase here is going to be, it's going to impact the district, and that's what we are here to do. I mean, we can't really control costs, but we can control the use. We can do what we can to curtail the use here. Water is an interesting one. We do monitor water. We don't typically save a lot of money on water, but what we can do is be an early detection system for problems with water. So, increases in sewer fees, if one of your towns decides to increase fees or the bills are coming incorrectly, anything like that, that's what we bring to your attention as quickly as we can. So, this is your energy cost profile for the last fiscal year from July 22 to June 23. So, this is all the costs of the utilities that we have in our database collected from you. And as you can see, over 65% of Queen Anne's utility spend was on electricity. So, that's going to be, and is our primary focus. The biggest piece of that slice of the pie is in your HVAC, heating, cooling, ventilation. So, that's why we do focus on that primarily. That's why we bring in the boiler experts and our tech lead Jose behind me, and we try to look for opportunities where we could save there, whether it's in your control system, findings from audits. So, you know, our goal is to make sure when your buildings aren't being used that they are set back, and we strive on teaching your staff on how to set back buildings, you know, every weekend, every night, every extended holiday, and especially during the summer. So, this is a little summary. We do like to do these updates, at least annually. This is early results right now. We only have data through August, so we don't have the full year yet. But right now, we're at $157,000 saved at about 10% reduction in your total costs. And the environmental impact of that has been 633 metric tons of CO2 avoided. So, some of you may be wondering what on earth does that mean, or what does that look like? So, that's, it takes 10,474 trees over 10 years to offset that amount of CO2. And it's also equivalent to driving, you know, over 1.5 million miles in an average car. And it's also the same energy that would power 76 average homes for a year. So, we're making a dent, and we're seeing the trend going in the right direction. So, it's very promising. Another piece of this is benchmarking. So, this is what they call an energy use index or intensity. This is basically all the energy use divided by your building's square footage, and you come up with this number, EUI number. And it's a benchmarking number that the EPA uses to compare schools with other schools. So, it's also used for the Energy Star program. So, schools that are in the top 25% nationwide, they'll measure high schools against high schools, and if you're in that top 25%, then we can apply for Energy Star. Right now, we actually have eight buildings that we're working on Energy Star right now that were, they actually qualified. We've done the engineering walkthrough on your behalf, and we're hoping to get at least eight buildings here certified this year already. Your base year, which is the year prior to the contract start, so as you can see, you're already beating the regional average. So, the regional average is 54. You guys are already at 52, and so far, we've got that down to 49. Our goal is to obviously get all the buildings down to that Energy Star level. All right, so, basically, what we do to come up with this number is 1,000 BTUs. So, we convert all the KWH, all the thermes, all the gallons of oil that you use, we bring it down into one single unit for the year for the building, and divide that by the square footage. So, it's basically, you know, 54 EUI means 54,000 BTUs per square foot for the year. And that's a very standard benchmark for energy globally. All right, so it's used by everyone and including us. So, energy use reduction, just wanted to show you a couple of these slides. So, in the, it might be hard to read, but in the green line, that's your base year use. This is all in use. So, this is what we're comparing ourselves to every year. All right, so what we're trying to do, our goal is to beat this green line every year, and typically, we see those get lower and lower throughout, you know, every year of the program. So, all the work that we're doing now is going to be, you know, that'll be maintained in the following year, and then built on every year after that. So, right now, we're looking at about a 6% reduction in, on the electric. Propane delivery reduction, so when we first started in the program, we were in the middle of winter. So, we immediately tried to optimize boilers and heating. That was our main goal. We brought in our boiler expert Gary Rogers, worked with your staff to just try and curtail, this is before even Mark was hired, to curtail as much propane and heating oil, and try and get those deliveries reduced. So, that seems to have worked for propane and heating oil. Heating oil, you can see here. I know this isn't the full year of heating oil, so there may be some tanks sitting there half-full still. So, we would anticipate deliveries starting to come in in the next few months here as it comes back up. But we really, it looks promising that we can keep that under the baseline load there. And then water, that's a quarterly bill. That's why you'll see it fluctuate between high use and no use. So, you give four quarterly bills. Again, water typically is pretty close to how we are in the base. All right, this here is our savings trend. So, as you can see, the first four months of the program, we were focusing on the propane and heating oil. Again, that's about 20% of your total cost for the district. And then when Mark was hired here in April, then we turned our focus over to the electric, and we see a positive trend on the electric savings there, and we anticipate that to continue to grow. And it looks like we have a lot of opportunity in November, December, January, the winter months, on your electric side as well. That wasn't really a focus for us at the beginning, but it will be certainly this year. So, we anticipate that the savings will be very good by the end of the first year. And hopefully, we can come in and present what that looks like at that time. All right, so does anyone have any questions about the program, or what we've been doing here?
I have a question, just, so if we apply for the Energy Star, does it get us anything? I mean, can we apply for grants, or does it, how does it benefit besides the recognition?
Yeah, it's basically a recognition for your building. You typically get a plaque from the EPA Energy Star, and they also give you an Energy Star sticker. It's very similar to when you buy appliances, they have the Energy Star sticker. So, this program was designed to be just like that, except for buildings. And then you can put that Energy Star certification sticker on the building if you so wish.
That's great, there will be buildings already on track for that. Now, I have a question about the propane and the heating oil that we purchased. So, are you guys involved in contracting that out? Like, how do we get the best, we know they're getting the best deal for our?
Yeah, we don't, we were not involved with costs. I mean, we'll certainly alert the team if we do see a huge increase in costs. But what we focus on is how, like, down in the equipment, like, the equipment that's using that propane, how can we get that to use less of it?
Ms. Bennett, we shop the market and wait until the kind of indicators say, hey, now's the time to pull the trigger on this and pre-buy our propane and our heating oil to keep the cost down on that. It has gone down this upcoming year that we locked in for transport, bobtail, and then also for the heating oil portion. But it's, we watch the market all the time just to make sure that we're not buying it at a peak, so.
Thank you. Great.
When we talk about, you know, your benchmark.
Yes.
The temperature of the winter can have a big effect. What's your explanation going to be, or how are you going to keep this apples and apples? When one winter is three degrees average colder than the previous winter, do you factor that in to give us an actual answer, not just say, well, the reason you're up this way because it's a little colder, but, you know, where are we actually as a base? Do you have a way to measure that, considering the temperature fluctuations sometimes?
Yeah, so, what we do, look at heating degree days and cooling degree days, and what we do is, if we see a variation of two standard deviations beyond the baseline line, we will make an adjustment in that, we'll make an adjustment to the base so that it'll either lower or increase the base load.
Actual.
Right, yes. And then we'll measure ourselves against that new number. Same with in the future, if you happen to have a colder winter and you do use more energy, or even better example, if it's a mild, we're not going to go ahead and claim that we saved you that money because it was a mild winter. We will actually adjust for that.
I mean, if January is, let's say, average 30 degrees, and that's the base, that's fine. When it goes to 35 or 28, then that would change your, you know, I mean, you had no control over that.
Yeah, we, yeah, exactly. We don't have control over it, and our goal is to not take credit or take losses for it.
We could call Al Gore and have him fix that.
Yeah, yeah. But we use three years of data for the base. So, we have the base year, which is the year prior to the contract, and then the previous two years. And we do an analysis at the very beginning when we establish the baseline to make sure that it's, you know, it's reasonable with the weather for the last three years.
And this is your first year here?
Yes, well, under the new name, yes.
Yeah. The law of diminishing return, I mean, I would think the first year you'll see more savings, or do you anticipate the same savings each year? Because, you know, once you make certain adjustments, how corny do you squeeze out orange to get more juice out of it? I mean, I just, you know, the first one, you probably, you hit the low fruit.
Exactly.
But then the higher fruit gets higher.
Yes.
Is that, you still optimistic that we can keep this usage down?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, you're right. We do typically see the trend go up pretty steeply in the first year. Probably starts plateauing at the end of the second year. And then after that, we, you know, we start looking deeper and deeper into the more technical opportunities, right? So, like you said, right now, we're doing like just your standard guideline stuff, changing set points, making sure they're set up properly, your schedules, making sure your buildings are setting back every night, every weekend. And then, you know, once we have that base established, you're right, it does start to slow down. But we continue to look for those opportunities throughout the life of the program. And we do typically see the trend, in savings trend, increase over the whole five years of the program, yep.
Just to kind of go along with that, so you've done 387 energy audits so far, is that right, Mark?
As a team, we have, yeah.
So, do you just continue doing the same audits, or do you start doing a second level, digging in deeper when we start going into the other years, trying to do more fine tuning?
Yeah, so right now, we call it phase one and phase two. So, we do have these low-hanging fruits. So, these are the audits that Mark will be continuously looking at, coming in into the building after hours, making sure that he doesn't hear any of the HVAC running, just trying to get all that initial stuff set up first. And then once, you know, once he starts going into these buildings and notices, okay, they're 100% compliant every single time, that's when we start looking at the more detailed stuff, like, what can we do to the equipment to run it better during the occupied time? All right, so, you know, can we make it ventilate better? Can we increase the flow from the boiler? Do we need to adjust the central plants to, you know, deliver more heat or less heat out into the building itself? And those kind of more finer details come in later in the program for sure, yep.
Thank you.
I have a question. Your data sets include this building as well, correct?
It does. We, yes, we.
I want everybody to.
Hopefully, we're going to get it in a couple of years, though.
I think it's an important factor to speak of, because I feel like when we vacate this building that it will definitely positively impact the overall data. So, is there a way to run that data piece without this building in there, so we can really just focus on the schools?
Yes, we can. So, we track everything, whether it's in, as a part of the energy program or not. And then we can separate out individual buildings. We have the detail all the way down to the individual meters. So, any way that you want to slice and dice the data, we can absolutely do that. If you want to just look at elementary schools, you can. If you just want to look at the towns individually.
You know, by age, comparison.
Age comparison, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
You can compare Centerville Middle School to Sundersville, Sundersville's a new school, Centerville's an older middle school.
Right.
You could compare those two and show us the difference.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we can, yep.
But if we're keeping this building as CTE, it would still be included as one of our school buildings.
It'd be extra square footage.
But I think at that point, it would be renovated, and it would be more efficient. So, yeah.
And this building, unfortunately, it doesn't have a benchmarking precedence with Energy Star. So, they're typically only, we're only going to be able to do a national benchmark against elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. Even early child center, childhood centers aren't benchmarkable for Energy Star. But we still do our benchmarking here ourselves, yep.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Bennett had one question about, you know, do you plateau? Part of Mark's job really was falling on Mr. O'Donnell and myself of making sure that, you know, we have setback schedules at, say, you know, Centerville Elementary School, 4:30, all right, teachers are out there. But there is always a program going on somewhere in that, at Queen Anne's County High School. So, you know, at the auditorium, is the auditorium, the choir is practicing until, you know, 8 o'clock tonight. Is the heat on in there? You know, is the basketball this and that and all? It's almost a full-time job of monitoring, is that on, is it off? You know, was it removed out of the system? Was it just on for that one night? And sometimes people get, we get complacent, and, you know, they're, he found three rooftop units, even though it says it's off at Queen Anne's County High School, they're running, you know, non-stop. So, it is juggling that, and then I always joke around with Mark about, hey, you know, we're in the shoulder months here of, he's narrowing down that time schedule of when the units are running, so the complaints go to him from the teachers. But it is a constant waking up in the morning or the night before, or the week before, and watching that trend of what the temperatures are going to be to make sure that we don't go too far. And then we're kind of, you know, walking on that fine line, because you're not going to see as much savings during your shoulder months as you would during like your heating or cooling times, but you still can capture some of that time and that money there. So, it is constant monitoring it.
And part of even what Sid said there too, is not only monitoring those systems, looking at, just to see if that, obviously, we want to monitor the comfortability when we're adjusting schedules, but also back here is our technical lead Jose, we'll look into those systems to make sure, are these systems functioning properly on the building management system itself? So, like what Sid said, we found rooftop units that weren't answering to schedules that were set up. Our goal is to go in there and find them, make sure, and I'll be on the roof verifying, in the classrooms verifying, listening. Is it actually cooling? What is going on with these units specifically? We have Jose and a team of engineers too that go in and help identify and provide information to the school district. Hey, this is where we think this problem is headed. This is where we think that JCI is going to need to come in, or whoever the contractor might be to fix these sort of things, so that we can get these issues resolved quicker, and there's less likelihood of losing any more additional money from having these systems running constantly. Or, and again, this happens to large school districts everywhere, where you might have a unit somewhere that just stays on, or it doesn't function, or listen to the system the right way as it should be. So, that's part of, little snapshot, but an extension of what Sid had just mentioned there.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, no more questions? Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thanks again for all your support. It's been great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, spotlight presentation, Dr. Sprangle.
Good afternoon, everyone. President Schifinelli.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Sal, board members, executive team members. For the record, I am Dr. Marcia Sprangle, the Assistant Superintendent, and it gives me a great pleasure to present our October Spotlight for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. First up, we have Bayside Elementary School. This year, Bayside Elementary School was selected to participate in the Terrapin Education and Research Partnership Program. This is facilitated by Maryland's Environmental Services. Bayside students were excited to welcome the Terrapin, which is located in the media center. So, if you get a chance to visit Bayside Elementary School, make sure you stop by to see the Terrapin. This is the first year that Bayside Elementary School has participated in the program, and they're thrilled to pieces.
Excuse me, does the turtle have a name?
I don't know that.
They do have, they have one, I'm trying to think of where I was the other day, but they have one, and his name is Tiny Tim. Canard, yes.
Canard, that's Tiny Tim's?
I think sometimes the names change.
They do change.
Depending on the day, right?
Yes, but they're all super cool.
Right. Next up, we have Centerville Elementary School. Centerville Elementary School started the year by having lessons that helped to foster relationships with families, students, and the school community. Last month, Centerville Elementary School held its Back to School Night. The staff greeted students and families with smiling faces and excitement. Families toured the school, learned classroom expectations, and spoke to school partners, such as the PTA. We all love our PTAs, for sure. Families and students enjoyed some Kona Ice to celebrate the first month of school. As a part of the new reading program, second grade students read selected texts and compiled a list of characteristics of a good citizen. So, at Centerville Elementary School, we have super citizens. So, the next time you're by, check out that super citizenship. So the next time you're by, check out that super citizenship. Next up, we have Graysonville Elementary School. The staff and leadership team at Graysonville Elementary are completing a book study this year. I think they're following in suit with Dr. Salins with the leadership books that we are reading as well. The leadership team is reading Lead Like a Pirate, and the staff is reading Teach Like a Pirate. The leadership team kicked off the event by dressing like pirates. Boy, I know they had some excitement going on at Graysonville Elementary School. There, you can see them pictured in their back-to-school assembly, sharing their expectations for the year. Next up, Canard Elementary School. Fifth-grade students enjoyed a field trip to the Avalon Theater in Easton, where they viewed a documentary film and had an informative discussion led by a historian, Tony Cohen. The Students of the Month Assembly was held for students nominated for being responsible, the character counts pillar for the month of September. International Dot Day was a big hit at Canard Elementary School. If you had a chance to stop by, you can see in that picture there, they have dots across the back wall of the media center. It was an exciting day at Canard Elementary School during Dot Day last month. Next up, we have Kent Island Elementary School. To support that Kent Island Elementary School goes purple, students colored purple crayons and made a pact to be, to make good choices throughout the year. Ms. Angela Geibert, picture there, is one of our early learning supervisors, jumps in to help the pre-K staff unpack materials, furniture to prepare for the back-to-school night. Pre-K students contemplated their prospective careers doing imaginary play there. They had lots and lots of fun. And of course, the biggest excitement for the school was the outdoor classrooms, the ribbon cutting. You can see the students pictured there, cutting the ribbon. Also, School Resource Officer Chad Schroyer makes friends while on the job. Settlersville Elementary School. Settlersville Elementary celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month on September fifteenth. The event was planned by parents, the PTA, and the QACPS migrant recruiter. Students participated in bingo and had an opportunity to share about their culture. Staff enjoyed special Hispanic cuisines provided by our families at Settlersville Elementary School. Stevensville Middle School. A positive behavior intervention and support program is off to a great start at Stevensville Middle School. Students bought tickets to attend planting and popsicles and entered a raffle to play a quick game of dodgeball. Actually witnessed that today while I was at Stevensville Middle School, having lots of fun outside. Students dissected owl pellets, excuse me, in seventh grade science. They categorized and analyzed the bones found to determine what the owls had eaten. Oh, boy, lots of excitement. Students in eighth grade science measured volume with precision. Reaching for the stars, students in the enrichment, extension, and intervention class conquered the astronaut challenge as they explored the wonders of space. Kudos to Stevensville Middle School students. Next up, we have our Rise Academy. It's up and running extremely well. Two Kent Island High School graduates and current Kent Island High School juniors spent countless hours creating that beautiful mural in the background with special quotes. Also, they have a food pantry. I guess you would call it also not only food, but clothes. They have refrigerated item, food items as well for any students or families needing those supplies, for sure. So kudos to our Rise staff. Also, they had an opportunity to share a meal. They did a little tailgate, the staff and the students. So they had lots and lots of fun. And that is it for our October Spotlight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Dr. Kibler, policy calendar update. Good evening, President Shifinelli, Dr. Salins, board members and executive team, Dr. Matthew Kibler, Director of Accountability and Implementation. What I'm bringing to you tonight is just a schedule for the year of a policy calendar. A little bit of background, you might remember it's been about eighteen months that you all voted to approve edits to the policy on policies. What we've been doing, or I've been doing, is meeting with groups that oversee each policy area. So you've got HR, finance, CNI, things like that. And what we're trying to do is get our policies and regulations, well over a hundred, on a cycle, a four-year cycle, where they will be coming up for review every year, just to be in line with what our policy on policy says. So when I meet with these groups, I ask them, what we're trying to do is, for everything in their area, get, to basically break up their policies into equal chunks over four years. We're in the second of this four-year calendar to get this up. Obviously, if we have something that comes from the state or something that somebody in the community brings up, you know, something might get out of line there, which is, it's all fine, or we have a new policy. But just trying to get these all on a schedule that we can adhere to and continue to monitor. So when I meet with the groups, they're asked to, for the policies for the year, do they just need to be reaffirmed? So we're just saying, hey, this is all good. We just need to say that we looked at it, and we'll review it again in four years. Do they need re-formatted and reaffirmed? If you've looked at some of our policies, some of them date way back to like nineteen ninety-three, the early two thousands, things like that. So maybe they're fine, and they just need to be put on our new format. So that, that's what I call reformat and reaffirm. Do they need a full edit so there are changes? Or can they be rescinded? Can they just go away altogether? And then, so the plan is that we will start bringing policies for this year to you all next month in November. And this is, it's a little easier probably to see on your own laptop, but this is the calendar that we put together for this year. I don't pretend to be an expert in each of these policies, just trying to help organize everybody around the district to get us on a schedule. Are there any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? Nothing?
It's extremely exciting stuff.
Must be doing a good job.
The ones who like to pay phone in the hall and stuff, they need to look at some.
Yeah, exactly.
But we appreciate it and keep it up. And I know we've approved a lot of policies that have been revised over the months and last year, of course.
Sure, it'll be busy.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Kibler, for your leadership.
Definitely needed to be tackled. Okay, no action items tonight. Future meetings, November first, twenty twenty-three, at six PM will be our regular open sessions. And November fifteen, twenty twenty-three, at five PM will be the November work session. And we do this.
I'm sorry, President Shifinelli, can you give me those dates again?
November first, twenty twenty-three, at six PM, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five PM. Okay.
The work sessions in November, I mean, we can always, that's scheduled right now, but that could at the next meeting be changed if we find out we don't need it with the holidays and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think, I think in November and the December one, for our team, I think we can fit everything, squeeze everything in on the regular meetings. And just FYI to the board that, especially in, we know, January, February, we get heavy into budget season, so we're here nearly every Wednesday. So if we do have something that needs to come, we can sneak it in on one of those agendas. But my recommendation would be right now, you know, I think we can tentatively kind of think about canceling the November fifteenth and then the December one.
Yeah, that's fine. I do remember.
There's not one planned for December, okay.
No, okay.
Tell me the November one.
So.
Okay, well, if nothing arises between now and November first, we'll consider that.
Vote on it on the first.
Yeah, okay, so it's got to be voted on? No, okay, that's fine.
Talk about it, discuss it.
We will make it up in January and February, I guarantee it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dennis.
Okay, anything else? Yep, motion to adjourn, do I hear one?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
And good night. Okay, before anybody goes.